Hey Peter, hey Elliot.
Hey Jesse, how are you?
Hi Jesse. Hi everyone.
Hey Ezra.
Ezra.
Hello everybody.
Hi Jim.
Hey guys.
So, who you missing?
I don't see Chris on here, but I know, I just asked him today if he has any plan changes and he doesn't. Oh, there he is right now.
Hi Chris.
Hi there.
Alright, since I guess, looks like we're all gathered. This is a subcommittee meeting for zoning board on 596 North Avenue with continuation from the previous meeting. With that, I'm gonna have Tom read the news of the meeting.
Well, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 1-301-7158-592. Meeting ID 870-8236-6017. Passcode 905370. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternative format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renaud, Town Engineer at 7812466308. As far in advance of the event as possible. Every event will be, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you.
Alright, well we, I think, well, I think Peter has got probably most of the show today or discussion. So we'll start with him and we'll go into landscape and civil engineering basically, I think after that, and I have a few questions for Jesse that may be related to what comes up on Wednesday. So with that, I've already given you a host, Peter, so you've got the go.
You're good to go. How's outlooks everyone? Pretty clear?
Yep.
Okay. So we work further into the elevations from when we met the last time. We've created, I think we've got a better roof line where we're wondering if I can zoom on that a bit. Where we're trying to make overhangs here like a foot and a half. And we're using the bracket language that we're using on the smaller roofs and the larger roof area as well. And so I felt like we carried that language through both on the front elevation and also on the right and left elevations. Certain areas of the facade we simplified by losing some of the transom windows. There were an awful lot of them in the building. We kept them in the, call it the turrets of the larger hips so that they rise up in those areas and then I removed them in areas of the building fade away a bit, right and left. And also in some of the center portions, I kept them in the main lobby area. So there's some light there as well. And then worked this elevation, this is the left side elevation going down into the driveway. We kept the footprint the same, but up here we protruded the building out two feet. These are in the living areas of those units, so it added a little bit more square footage inside, but it also allowed me to break the roof line here and bury the elevation as it went down into the parking lot. Also worked in keeping those corners right and left, just keeping them down. In fact, I was thinking today I might even try bringing this plate line down in this area. So this bedroom, the ceiling would be an eight foot ceiling instead of a nine. Just to help bring this whole roof down as the building turns the corner. This same language happens again on the right elevation as well. It's the first time we're seeing the rear elevation started to work with. Again, this is stepping away from us into the center point. Well, we thought it would be nice to keep an overhang here as well as you enter the building for coverage, about six feet out flat in this zone. This, we were thinking is really probably the primary residence entrance for the residents of the building more than the others. So we're working on keeping that same language. Still, this roof, I don't think is completely 100% right yet. It's coming closer, needs a little more work in this area to break it up a bit. I don't think it's gonna run as flat and as even showing there. But we didn't get to that today, but we will. We've then gone into the plans and started to look at where these overhangs and protrusions are happening, where the bays are happening. We tried to share just a few hours ago, an updated footprint with Chris so that he can start to amend the site plan. Here you're seeing where the building is, is showing those overhangs on the right and left in the living areas to allow the variation in the roof change to help break that flat so the facade. So in CAD then we went and drew all four elevations. Here's the front elevation, here is the left side elevation, here is the right side elevation, and then finally here is the rear elevation. So these are still developing, but this is where we're at at this point.
Peter, you wanna go to the south elevation, which is the side?
The last.
The left side, yes.
Yeah.
So this looks quite nice, finishes off that edge. I assume the other edge, the other side is similar to this.
Right.
A mimic of it. And the fact that the building on the back end basically breaks down a little bit, I think is helpful too. And that trim piece between the second and third floor, I think really helps quite a bit.
Yeah.
To break the scale down. Can you go to the front to see how that turns the corner?
This band right here.
Yeah, and then it runs through to, jumps the bay and then runs through from there.
Yeah, that's right.
And bracket, I'm not sure about the bracketing, but I like it. And I like the fact that's much more overhang than you had before, cuz it was just sort of clipped off. It didn't have, it didn't have the texture of the neighborhood, which everybody's roof in the neighborhood basically overhangs. So this, this sort of mimics that at the same time. So this is quite a step forward basically in my mind. Tom, any thoughts?
No, no, I'm just glad we had to do something, I think, with that side that faces the elevation that faces the KFC cuz there's people coming down North Ave. That's how they're gonna experience the building. So, I mean, I think what he's done is fine. I did note though, Peter, on your CAD drawings, you had the back roof, the back.
Yes.
Looks different from the renderings here.
It is. I think Steve and I were talking about that, but it was too late in the day to amend it. See the roof is breaking down on the front elevation?
Yeah.
You're getting highs and lows. He was, and it's part of what was drawn in CAD, but as he was working through the rear, as he was working through the rear elevation, it was drawn like this, but it wouldn't. It will go up here across and then down again.
Yeah, cuz this, if the two outer edges basically are the furthest forward and then, and then the next section basically is back a step and it keeps on stepping back and the roof doesn't represent that whole process. I understand it's still working that out, but and it will give it more, with the roof, it will reinforce, reinforce the actual physical face of the building basically, which it doesn't right now.
That's right. Yep.
And that'll also hide that utility up on the roof a little better from the back?
What, what just, that utility is actually, I'm gonna assume the elevator. You probably will still see that, particularly if you're straight on like we are, but from the ground, you won't see much of it.
And from the front, it looked like it was a bit more behind the higher roof.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We, you know, right now we're showing clapboard on the elevator. I think we'd like to think about that, maybe try some different materials, you know, look at it a little more. But, but we wanted to at least start to show it.
I think if it showed up like a chimney, it would make sense. You know, it's like this, it's like this big hotel basically with a central chimney in the, in the middle of the building basically, which would be some sort of meeting room or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting rid of those eyebrows or transoms or whatever they were on the, on the gray section seemed to really help.
Yeah.
Upper thin windows are gone, that was smart.
It started simple by the elevation, but I think in a good way. It's not as busy as it was before.
No, it's much, much better basically. Much better. I think that the, on this elevation, I think when you work it out a little bit more, well, maybe not. I just, you know how your eyes change basically from one view to another? I just, I was looking, my eye was seeing it in reverse and I just put it in the right direction. And I said, oh, no, that works, okay.
Yeah.
Again, I was gonna make a comment.
And your eye flipped.
My eyes flipped, exactly. You look at things too long and all of a sudden they go back and forth.
And there'd be no ramp in the front, right? That's just flush right in?
It actually, when we get to the, there is a ramp, it's, you'll see it in the landscape plan basically.
Nothing that would, that would, that would block the facade?
No, no, just the trees, just the trees.
Yeah, you know, on one of those trees, if you could put a tree kind of in front of where that, the elevator runoff is gonna be, that might be helpful too. I forget the landscape plan, I knew it was a good landscape plan, it was, they had a lot of material in it, but if that could act as a barrier to, to the houses across the street, I think it'd be helpful.
I, you're talking about trying to hide the elevator?
On the roof, the runoff.
In the mid, I, it doesn't bother me if it's done properly, like I say, if it looks like a chimney. You know, the neighborhood has a bunch of chimneys, so this has a chimney. It's just a matter of what you clad it with basically. So I, I, you know, I guess what I'm trying to do is sort of leave the front entry more exposed and the ends more buried in the form of planting. So I don't see that, I mean, if you look at this right now and say, even though it's covered with clapboards and say that's brick, you know, it would look like it's part of the building. Cuz we're always used to seeing chimneys on buildings. So it just has to be a chim, look like a chimney, but be an elevator. Anyway, this is very good. Anything else, Peter?
Nope, that's what we have at this point.
Alright, Tom, any further comments before I move on to landscape?
No, I'm good.
Alright, so let's pass the baton on. Elliot, let me get you here. Elliot, you got the show.
Okay, everybody see that?
Yeah, we see a screen, but we don't see the image.
Oh, I gotta stop sharing then, sorry. How's that?
There you go.
Alright. So last time, Jim, you had mentioned reducing the number of trees along Main Street and we've done that. We have four in the central location and then continued to pick up the trees down at 598. Insert a tree right there, so we've got, I think, three or four trees out in front. So we're continuing that theme across the front here. We've added the walk-in, the arced walkway, kept the connection to the street with this, excuse me, with the set of steps coming up to meet the ramp here and it's a, it's a flush entry into the building. So I forget the elevation number, but we're flush here. So in terms of pitch, I used the basic numbers from the civil plan. I think we have about five, five percent here and 4.9% on the left-hand side as we look at this plant. So we're meeting at the center again at the flush entryway. We've got groups of three plants on either side, three trees, groups of trees on either side. And there would be, I'm thinking of a heritage birch, which has a nice three-season interest. It's a deciduous tree, it's not heavily foliated necessarily, but it's gonna create some softening of the building corners, but Peter, actually, the building looks really lovely. So I don't even know if we wanna put these trees there. You know, I think it looks fantastic. Or we may just keep these and then we, we end up, as I mentioned at our last meeting, these trees at the, at the foremost part of the building would be festiget, they could be hornbeams or something like that. So it's got a narrow columnar style to it that's not necessarily gonna take up a lot of space, but just gonna add some verticality to the building and some softening to it. And then to finish off the front elevation, some mixed shrub planting in the front with ground covers, low shrubs. I don't wanna get anything too high to block the light coming into the buildings. So we'll have a theme of lower deciduous and evergreen shrubs in the front. At this corner here, Jimmy, you mentioned you wanted to see some evergreen screening. This can be shifted around a little bit or add some more trees in there. But I have, the primary buffer is out in the front here. And then the secondary buffer is this area here. So we're getting the, we're kind of softening the views from North Main Street this way.
The, just two points. Since you didn't attend the first few meetings, in, in dealing with the massing of the building, one of the things, and you may have heard this, but I'm gonna say it again. The intent was basically to have the entry more exposed than the sides of the building and forget what the building looks for the moment, but the intent was to have it more forested along the street, similar to what's there basically now, except healthier trees. And to have those two ends basically more visually obscured. Now that may not work given where the direction of the architecture is going at this, but that was the direction at the time. And you're right, the trees next door on this, looks like they're all be on this side of the sidewalk. So it continues the sidewalk trees basically along the street. I might note that I have had a conversation with Bill Renaud about their, his feeling or their feeling about planting within the public or town property. He is fine with it. He does have though, a list, and I've asked for it, a list of trees, shrubs, whatever. I haven't seen it yet, so I don't sure what it covers, that the town wants to have along in their property. How that affects you or is it, or will it affect you, I'm not sure. It may be something where the town would like something, but maybe in this particular case, something else will work equally well. I would assume that the street trees wanna be similar to the rest of the street trees between the two other buildings as well. So maybe it's other things that might get affected or whatever. But I think eventually we, we need to, and I've set this plan on to Bill today since I just got it, have some conversation with Bill about what's acceptable from the town's point of view on trees and shrubs and stuff like that. But they are very much want, allowing basically a developer to use the town property and maintain that of course for their projects basically. So I wanna make sure that we didn't step over a town line and say, we wanna do this and only to find out that we'd be out there with a chainsaw taking them down. So anyways, that's just a piece of information that you're gonna have to work with going forward.
Okay, thank you.
So Jim, would we have to condition, when we, you know, when this thing goes through the final process, that the property owner take care of those trees and there'll be agreement with town?
I think some of it anyway, you know, like the grass and whatever. But as to the street trees, I kinda wonder what the agreement is with the other two properties, alright? And it may be that as things develop, because I'm not even sure Bill was involved in the other two buildings, quite frankly. And so, but under his jurisdiction, he may want them to take care of those two. And that's part of the, that will have to be part of the conversation with Bill as to what the stipulations are. Cuz I'm thinking the same thing with the, which is another project for us, is the four corners garage, or not garage, should I say, gas station that we're working on.
Yeah.
Cuz I think that needs to be fattened up too. So this I like, but it just made that, maybe that there might be some things that Bill wants to weigh in on. And like I, like I, I actually sat down and showed him the last onion, onion sketch that I had basically, and he seemed fine with working within this area. So, you know, short of the fact that this has changed slightly, I don't think it will be a very long or tedious conversation for him to get signed off.
So Jesse, you don't see a problem with that, do you?
No, I don't. I think that should be included as a condition of the decision that we maintain it and, and just clarify that it's allowed, subject to approval by, by Bill Renaud. And we can incorporate the tree list that the town has, or if he, if he wants to specify them at the outset, I think either one of those approaches is fine, whichever is his preference.
I would, the thing I'd add too though is that we're gonna want some assurances that if one of the trees doesn't take or something happens, then we're gonna wanna replace it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we had a condition like that for the Tarrant Lane project that called for replacement within a certain number of days if the trees don't take or maybe within a couple of months or something like that.
Well, usually the landscaper basically provides, it gives like a year's warranty or something like that on it and they have to come in and replace them, you know? And so, at least from that first stage of guarantee to the builder or to the owner, that's taken care of. It's the lifespan after that, how long is that good for?
Yeah.
Because, and you know, is it, is it, is it, does it ever become a town tree or is it a site tree, you know? But we can, we can deal with that. I'm just, at this point, I'm just telling it, we got, we've got the ability to work within this property. And I would say that if I get the list, then, you know, on the landscape, we can look to see whether there was some discussion we wanna have, because it's, what they have may not be appropriate for what we wanna do in the site, particularly the ones that sort of go over the line a bit and sort of wanna be in our space, but on their space too.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's it.
You had also mentioned salt tolerance in this corner over by the Knights of Columbus as well.
Yeah.
One of the trees that is particularly salt tolerant is a, is a blue spruce. Norway spruce is not so much. Arbivide is not so much, but the blue spruce, if that's part of the, the approved plant list, or if it's not, then we might sort of have that discussion to see whether or not we can incorporate those trees.
The approved, the approved plant, the preferred, let's not say approved, preferred plant list that, that Bill has would be on their property. So since that's on the project property, that's not in discussion. So if, if the, if in a presentation to the board, and I'm gonna say Chip, cuz Chip seems to know a lot about plants and agrees with you as far as salt tolerance or what would be the right trees to be in that area, then, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not from my place basically in this group gonna spend time to talk about whether one tree is better than another tree, other than any feedback we get from Bill. I think this is, this is getting to the point, very close to the point, once we see something from Renaud that's ready basically to present to the board, quite frankly. So anything behind that line, that's the property edge in the front of the building, that's all within our ability to put whatever we think is appropriate for it. It's just the street trees and a few of those shrubs that are along the front, whether in fact the town has any issues with them.
Okay.
So what I would say, I would say, just looking at this, particularly the bushes around the entry, is that you and Peter should spend some time along the, that area of the building to make sure. I know you're sort of like, may wanna reconsider the corners. And that's fine, I guess, if you've got a better idea. It's all generated out of basically trying to gather more forest in those areas in original con- In in original concept, which may not be the best concept, at this point, it was just a starting point. But at the entry, you know, I think you should work with Peter and with the arc, with Peter as the architect and yourself to. Figure out whether you're. Blinding too much of the architecture, basically, how big are the trees and, or what are the bushes or whatever, basically. Because again, the intent was to have that middle section show up and have the outer sections basically be. More concealed, just to make the building seem smaller.
Yeah, this area here in particular might need to be revisited, I was, again, I was trying to. Soften the elevation with, again, some festiget trees here, but now we have some. Bump outs with the architecture that look really nice, and I think we might, you know, in lieu of. Softening it rather. We should highlight it.
I know, I I I would agree with you, it's it's, it's in a way, it's. It's like the front door, basically, it's, it's given that side of the building, which is seen. As Tom reports, you know, coming down the street, it's pretty predominant, and I think the design concept basically. Should be shown off a little bit.
Couple things to go off on that, I think, once we begin to show the porches in the front and back. We can kind of relook at the entries in the front and back there and the landscaping around it. And then Jim, I know you had talked about widening that front step in the front that centered. From the sidewalk, it still kind of looks a little narrow, I think widening that maybe shifting both those trees left and right.
I think you're, it should be at least the same width as the arched. Entry walkway basically, so it's probably a five footer as opposed to, I don't know, three, or whatever it is on here.
I believe mine is, I have five, but I believe it it was, I have to double check, but it might be a six foot wide walkway.
It should be more, it should be like like more of a grand staircase, even though it, even though it may not be used that much. It should appear as though it belongs there, and right now it seems like a side entry or something like that, it just. You know, it's it's got this. Southern sort of feel to it, where you've got this grand pathway along the front, but you don't have the grand staircase coming up to it. You know? So I I I certainly would agree that that needs a little relook at.
Elliot, just so I understand, this is Christopher, are we talking about the walkway from the arch to the street?
Yes, yeah, the central, the central one, I believe that's four feet wide. If I recall.
I mean, if you look at the rear, it's got this grand pathway in, and you look at the front. There really, the the pathways on in the arch, and there's nothing really to the street. And again, it might never be used or used very infrequently. On the other hand, it accents the entrance to the building. Or it can accent if done properly.
Yeah, may need a some cheek walls and maybe some. Two faced walls or retaining walls, just to kind of create a, you know, an eye catching. View right to the front of the building.
I'm I'm not so sure you have to get that fancy about it, I think, you know, broad enough. Yeah, okay, so a little bit of an upgrade, but I'm not sure you have to get that fancy, other thing. You all need to think about is a sign eventually for this site, where does it go? You know, it may be similar to what's next door, or it may be something different. You know, does it come, does it come, for instance, near the driveway? You know, or does it come near the entrance, which is really not going to be. The the primary entry for the building.
I think Peter had that on the facade of the building is what I, I believe I recall.
The vestibule, we were showing the sign.
So Jim, you're you're looking for a second.
Well, I mean, you don't, you don't have to have a a sign on us on the street, so to be a free standing sign, you don't have to have that at all. But take, take a look at it, you know, you've got trees that are going to grow up eventually, so that doorway over the sign. I mean, the doorway in the sign may not show up over time.
Maybe it's in between one of those four trees in the front there, kind of like in between the arch and the sidewalk. Maybe it's both, one on the building and one closer up, so when you're driving by, you see the one closer to the sidewalk.
Just take a look at it, see what you think.
That may be another thing to run by the TAC as well, they may have some some preferences for. For in terms of where that sign goes, if there is one, to make sure that the fire engines can can find the site.
Well, they'll, they may want something like a sign that says enter here or. Exit or whatever, and they'll certainly on this right hand corner of the building, as we're looking at it, they're going to want a beacon there. So as they're driving down the street, they'll see that beacon to know that this is the building they're going to.
And what's our, what's your schedule for the TAC?
I I've reached out to the traffic engineer to see if we can get on their meeting for the end of the month. I I, my conversation with him was late last week, I haven't heard back yet, I believe they meet the last Friday of the month.
And that would cover, is that covering sort of everything we'd want from police, fire, traffic, parking?
Yeah, they they meet with with, it's the town engineer, the fire chief, town administrator. Believe. ISD is there as well, I'm not sure, and they are, they do have representation by the police. As well, so yeah, I think pretty much all those issues.
Jim and Thomas, the board just looks for a clean letter from them saying, this is okay, or these are the conditions we want, is that how that runs?
Well, they might, there hasn't, has it been a traffic study, Jesse?
Yes, there has.
So they're going to look at the traffic study, they're going to look at the plans. And and then they're going to come back with comments, and it's generally basically. It's the TAC is made up of both the fire department and and the police, pretty much. Not sure the building department really gets involved, because this is all about traffic.
But they also have a traffic engineer. Works for the town too.
Yeah, the initial meeting, it it didn't focus so much on the the traffic generation side of it, because I think they understand that with the unit count. The the numbers are fairly low in terms of the amount of traffic that's generated, it was more about site access. And they did specifically also want to see a number of guest spaces and a couple of EV stations, charging stations, so. Chris is working on that, on the 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 best place to put those those spaces.
But so Jesse, can we count on you to bring up? You know, some sort of official memo by the end of that whole process, just so the board has that to rely on?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, you can, and we did, we talked about that with TAC before, they they said that they wanted to see us again before issuing a memo, but they're aware that. We're looking for a memo to sort of, you know, put everything in under four corners, so that the board has it for their review.
Okay, and is is there a similar process for the water sewer, that kind of thing?
That'll come from the town engineer, Ezra, Christopher, I just hear. Bill will review stormwater management and. All things water and sewer, and we'll see a letter from Bill on that, once we update our site plan.
Okay, but you're, that's on your radar, right, you'll bring that to the. I want to be, I mean, I know the board's gotten everything out to these groups. This is different from having peer reviewers, we would manage, so it's really, just want to make sure you're bringing all that back, okay?
Well, what we, what we, what I've said to him is to Chris, basically, is that. After we got path, the whole issue of setting the edges basically, particularly against the wetlands. That the rest have really had to do with internal drainage and like, and really. Doesn't affect what we're doing, because it's all on the ground, I have had a. Conversation with Bill, and from what I understand, the underground system basically is probably going to have to double. And I assume that, Chris, you know that already.
What was that, what was that comment Jimmy said?
I said, I said, because of the, what is it, an A class area, whatever they call it now. Is that he he, his comment to me was that your drainage system underground. Is going to have to double, in his opinion. I don't know whether he's, he has said anything to you, or whether you've met with him recently or anything like that, but that was. When I was talking about trees, I was asking about a few other things and.
Double in size?
Yeah, so that's, so that's not true. In in fact, I've I've presented numerous times, you know, to the, to the ZVA, and I've also discussed this with Bill. Directly, that we anticipated the possibility of. Of the stream that runs through the property being reclassified as a zone A. We said, and so we designed the system, assuming that it was, just to be conservative. Granted, Bill hasn't had a chance to review the stormwater report yet. But but all that data is is in the stormwater report. I don't have a lot to report to you today, Jim, but I mean, if if, what I was going to say to you is that we're working closely. With Peter and Andrew on on, they're tweaking the footprint a little bit here and there, and all those little things matter. You know, when we go to re redo and update the stormwater report, there's a lot of man hours that go into. You know, reevaluating watersheds to make sure that that we're collecting everything properly and grading everything properly. And I I wanted to make sure that that footprint is is firm or more firm before I go ahead and update the site plan, but once I do. Bill's going to get a revised stormwater report and and grading plan that he can review in detail, and he knows that that that's coming.
Alright, that's that, I mean, I don't think that we here. Need to get involved in that, I just report back what I heard, whether it's, you know, in process, because he doesn't have all calc. Or whatever else, and you're, as you say, waiting for Peter to freeze frame the place. Which will probably be a few more weeks, because now that he's, now that he's put all the bump outs on the building, he's actually got to show them on a plan. And figure out that some of those bump outs are in the middle of someone's bathroom, so. It's, it's how it goes as architects, believe me. Must be frights frustrating for for civil engineers, but it's it's our life.
So we try that, we try to do the best we can to tie to time our, you know, re redo. So that we're not doing it three and four times, you know, trying desperately to, you know, think about the client too, and. We are going to have to incorporate some storm stormwater management out front. To collect some of the water that's coming off those impervious services and getting it across the front of the building and off to the side where the wetland is, so that's going to be. A little challenging too.
Alright, so. I I think we've covered most of where we left off last time, and we've made some good progress. Jesse, actually, I was going to ask you, and you've already answered it, where we are with TAC. And because I was going back through my notes to see what I could find. And I also picked up the charging stations, yes, and guest parking as a previous comment made at. At the zoning board, so. Those are all answered, I guess, at this point, and all ending up basically at TAC before we have clearer direction there. And so I guess it it sort of hangs on. Peter and Andrew, I guess, to get their architecture. Cleaned up a little bit, so Chris can do his thing. I guess the next question is, since the zoning has a meeting. Of which we have twelve hearings, assuming they all go forward, sounds like another one o'clock evening. I think the last one was one fifteen, but that wasn't the longest hearing, we've had a two o'clock, two sixteen, I think. Way back in Shaw's, Sheriff's Day, basically. Anyway. Not that we want to best that at all, we only want to best one fifteen.
Yeah, no creating precedent here, we're getting, we're getting tired on our end by that time of night.
You wonder whether you're better to be late at night when everybody's snoozing, or whether to get them fresh. So anyway. I guess. What do you think about maybe giving a quick presentation, because I'm thinking the architecture is. Showing showing some very good promise, even the landscape for that matter would be maybe worth a quick. Discussion or review, just to, you know, I could see someone we might get into, I suppose. Not so much in the building appearance, as much as the building color, but. You know. We might as well, we might as well hear it, if someone has a reason to think that they. They don't like the yellows, like that.
Yeah, I I agree with that, Jim, we're certainly happy to give a presentation, if that's your preference, or or ask for a continuance, if you think that's. That's worth doing. We can send in the plans today, what we're we're showing here, so that Gail can circulate them to the members who haven't seen it yet. Not a lot of notice, but I guess that's the situation we're we're dealing with.
Well, yeah, it's usually supposed to be in by Friday, but I think, you know, if we keep it short and sweet. Progress report, so to speak, so it's not really formal, it's just, we're informing them like we did last time.
Tomorrow, is that right?
Uh, that's Wednesday.
Wednesday, I mean, this week.
Yeah, yeah, seven.
Jim, I agree, because I like the landscape plan, Chip might have something to say about it, but I. I think it's solid, but if he's going to want something, we should hear about it now. So, you know, let's keep this ball rolling.
Yep, yep, I agree, because the next, I mean, the next meeting's mid Jul, mid August. So if we might as well take advantage of the moment, basically, and if that sends us off where we have to do more. Then at least we have that timeframe to do more, and meanwhile, Peter and Chris can catch up with one another. And Elliot. Maybe I get that list from Bill, and I can send it off to Elliot Elliot, so he can look at. That and say, you know, that's not a good, that's not a good situation, or it's fine, you know, who knows at this point? Because I'd like to go and argue, if if Ellie can say that there's a better choice than what Bill's got on his list, and. You know, I'd want to argue with Bill and say, you know, this is why we would want to do this, and see whether we can shift at least a list locally here.
Yeah, the list shouldn't be written in stone, if there's a better solution for this site, we should take it.
Yeah, now that, then that leads me to the next one, which is. When and where do we go to conservation, when and where do, when do you go to conservation, Jesse, because. We're not part of that, of course.
Right, so Chris can maybe answer that better in terms of the the stream delineation, I know that his office is is in process of. Of preparing that application, but for the notice of intent, unless the Conservation Commission is willing to make an exception for us. We're technically, we're not allowed to file that until after the forty B process is closed out. There there are exceptions made to that, and we can ask Elaine and Rebecca if they they think the commission would have any problem with that. And if they don't, it may make sense to go ahead and get started with that application.
Yeah, I I just don't want it hanging us up, and we are, we are, we already know what you've told us before, which was. That we got to finish our process before they can do their process, even though we'd like it to learn parallel. If there's some way at least to sneak it in, so it's almost parallel, it would be better, if we can do that.
Okay, but we'll talk about that with the Elaine and Rebecca and see what they think.
Alright, alright.
Can I throw one other question, Jim?
Sure.
Just, I know that this group is is pretty familiar with working in plan view and with the renderings. I'm wondering if when you present this to the board and the public, if it might not help to have a more artistic rendering, something, you know, softer that. You just, because sometimes these, the computer. Elevations can look pretty stark.
We've done that, we've done that with most of the buildings in the past, so I assume, we, you know, at the last meeting. I was looking for that corner that's in front of you is upper right, alright? Because that's how the thing turns and how it looks down the street, so Peter couldn't get to it. He spent his time basically twinking it here and there, but, so yes, we will expect to have that, it just won't be for Wednesday, it will be. You know, in our August meeting, assumingly, basically, and there'll probably be two of them.
Yeah, because I know the public that, that's what they tend to respond to a lot more, what is it going to look like from where I'm standing?
It's, it's not just the public. ZVA members, basically, that, you know, if they're a lawyer, they're not trained for architecture and they can't read things.
Great, okay.
We all know that.
That sounds good, I may need to miss the Wednesday meeting, but it sounds like it's mostly going to be an update, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, Ezra, I think we're going to try to do our best to be as brief as possible, so we don't contribute to Jim and Tom missing their bedtime.
And then if, yeah, if we can get these other issues coming in from the engineer and from TAC for that August meeting, I think we'll be on schedule. For that August meeting, I think we'll be on schedule.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
You may want to do it first thing, so, so, so Chip doesn't disappear on us.
Yeah, that's fine with, fine with us.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
I don't know, Jim, to your point, do you want the sleepy chip or the fresh chip? I might work against it.
Oh, you know, I'd rather have the, the chippy chip. Cause otherwise that guy will show up later and all our work is down the tube.
People get cranky later, you know, that's.
Okay, with that, I guess we could close this meeting at, what time is it anyway? It's 3:48 and I thank everybody for their participation. That ends our meeting, the subcommittee for the Z B A on 596 North Avenue. And we'll all see part of you at least on, on Wednesday for just a quick update.
Great, see you there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.